Okay, we'll get the meeting started, the call to order. All rise for pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll do the roll call. Mr. Roman is absent with notice. Ms. Trich is going to be late. Mr. Kuzno?
Here.
Mr. Quinto is going to be, I believe, absent with notice. Ms. Affante?
Here.
Stephens?
Here.
And myself, Zarzak, present. I believe everybody received a copy of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? So moved by Mr. Kuzno and approved by Ms. Affante. Or Steve Stephens? I'm getting confused here already. So we've adopted the agenda. We'll do a call of the public. Please limit your responses to three minutes. Are there any residents wishing to present?
Cheers.
I just want to briefly say that the planning commissions working on a back order and a road system and also hoping that our new banner could possibly put this experience where the communities possibly may have a bar or a road system so that we're doing the best business practices. And as a community that has excellent ordinance is on the book, there's small communities like ours, so if a business comes in or first wants to come and build a house, there's no legislation, you just walk through the whole process as friendly and inviting and it's quick and efficient. And that will be needed at wheel and I would encourage the planning commissions to see how quickly that can get done. That's all that I have to say for now.
Seeing no other people wishing to respond to the call of the public, I'll close the call of the public. We'll go to clarifications from the commissions. Mr. Kuzno?
No.
Ms. Affante?
None.
Ms. Stephens?
Nothing.
Myself, at this point, I have nothing at present. So we will go to any correspondence? No correspondence. We do not have a public hearing scheduled. We can go to reports from the committee. We'll wait to miss Chick arise for the trustees, the ZBA.
Thank you. The zoning board of appeals met on August 21st of 2017 to hear a variance request for 8475 Main Street, which is Bobber Down. They are zoned GC, general commercial. They were asking for a dimensional variance for the rear setback, or I'm sorry, sideyard setback of 20 feet is required. What they were asking was 11.75 feet to construct a two-story, 391 square foot addition onto the rear or the west side of the building. That necessitated the sideyard setback variance. They were trying to not only make the interior floor plan flow better and give them an easier path around the area as well as additional storage space, but they were also trying to clean up some building code violations. So the zoning board of appeals did find that the request met the findings of fact and they approved it unanimously.
Thank you. Anything from the staff? Parks and Rec? Nothing at present. Downtown Planning Group?
Yes, the Downtown Planning Group and the Development Authority, Downtown Development Authority, met on 8/28. And what they were doing for the balance of the meeting was reviewing the draft of the Downtown Strategic Action Plan. Most of the conversation centered on the issue of timing, the presentation of the plan to both the Board of Trustees and the Planning Commission for acceptance, approval, or adoption. There was a sense among all the members that this should be done in sync with the process for the North Village. A concern of everyone on the committee was that both of these plans needs to consider integrating the future land use plan, transportation plan, and asset plan. And this also needs to consider allowing for time for a public comment here. Some of this depends on the proposed sewer expansion and how perhaps the RFQ might require some, you know, the request for, quote, "might require a RFI in advance," request for information, given that any interested parties may need to know about their relationship with, say, the cost of sewers. So generally speaking, a lot had to do with the timing of all of these different moving agendas and the many interested parties, but the drafts are very fully developed and there's a lot of energy. Mr. Libens, if you would like to add anything to that?
Yeah, I would say we had a very good discussion with members of the Downtown Planning Group and the DDA. We discussed a new draft Strategic Action Plan for Downtown. Both those committees are scheduled to provide feedback on that draft by Friday of this week. And we, the schedule that we discussed was making a presentation to the board on the RFQ, RFP process that Planning Commission discussed at the last meeting, next Tuesday, September 12th. And then depending on board feedback, proceeding with that process to, and then following by presenting a draft of the Downtown Plan along with the synthesis plan for North Village that was discussed in February at a joint Planning Commission meeting and board meeting on October 24th. And at that time, we would be looking likely for a motion to accept those plans and proceed with an RFP. Related, of course, is the master plan process, which the Planning Commission had recommended that the township proceed with master plan revision, which of course is a longer process. But the idea would be that we would incorporate these, the two plans that we've developed this year, the North Village Plan and the Strategic Action Plan for Downtown into the master plan revision process so that the formal adoption of those documents would happen along with an updated master plan. And time period for that would likely be six months to a year from now, depending on the process recommended by the board for adopting or proceeding with that master plan work.
Thank you. Do you have anything else as far as your general report to present?
No, nothing that's not on the agenda.
All right. Ms. Trich, we'll go with the Board of Trustees' report.
Yeah, thank you, and I apologize for being late. The Board of Trustees met August 29th. They approved $5,000 to the Parks and Recreation to move forward with their projects. They also approved $10,000 to Peoples Express to continue their services to the township and residents in the area. And we received a report from our code enforcement officer, and he is making a lot of progress and will be bringing reports to the board in the future to let us know what the status of the actions that he's working on and the number of complaints that he's receiving. And township purchased, is purchasing a new fire truck. And I think there, oh, there's going to be, you probably are aware, a temporary path around the new community park that's going to be just mulch, they're just kind of, you know, clearing brush away and grass and things like that to make a walking path for people so that they can move through the area just for some exercise or just to look around. So that's a good idea as well. So that's all I have for now.
Thank you. All right, now that we've had the reports, then we'll move on to our unfinished business, which is of course the zoning ordinance amendments for signs. We've received another printout of the work done by our consultants. You'd like to go ahead and let us know exactly what's been changed?
Sure. Actually, the, I spoke with Larry when we were setting the agenda, and we made the decision to proceed forward from the conversation that we had at the last meeting. And then, once we had reviewed all of it or received comments from Planning Commission on all of it, we would go, we would look at the revisions then. So to summarize where we were last month, we had gotten through page nine of the proposed ordinance. And some of the comments we received were specifically related to the definitions and consistency in how the grade was defined, how the height was defined. I think we resolved some of those comments. I did receive comments on material to make sure that we were permissive enough in material to allow materials that were consistent with the look and feel desired by the township, I think including some types of wood. So we're going to look at the definition of non-c combustible to be more inclusive. That was a general comment. And I received another general comment that some of the language was perhaps a little too technical, so specifically related to the illumination definitions. So we'll go back and look at that as well, of course, understanding that a lot of times zoning language is very technical, so we don't want to remove any of the intent of that language as well. But I think it's a fair, fair comment. Some of the other comments were to make sure that we, that the code was referencing the right official or maybe generally, not just referencing the building official, but also code enforcement officer. So I thought, last month, we had a very productive discussion. You know, if Planning Commission is, desires tonight or has prepared comments for the following sections, starting on page 10 really, is where we proceed into the district-specific recommendations. And the way it goes is we have tables that define the, the new regulatory requirements, but we have some comments in there that have, that reference what the, how they've changed based on the old sign ordinance. So I guess I'd ask Planning Commission their preference if everyone has had time to review this. Last month, we kind of took commissioners' questions one by one and addressed them, or I'd be happy to walk through a certain number of pages. And I will take your direction on how you'd like to proceed with the review.
I guess I'll query the board if we want to go and continue on as we did at our last meeting, page by page. If that's acceptable, I guess we will start on page 10 then. Section 36-792, signs permitted in recreational conservation and agricultural districts. If anybody has any comments or changes that they're looking at? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to page 11. Signs permitted in residential districts, section 36-793. Again, does anybody have any changes or comments on what has been presented? Yes, Ms. Trich?
I have a quick question for Mr. Libens. In the residential areas, if there's a homeowners association and we have an ordinance and they have their bylaws, which one supersedes?
I would have to check on that to see if homeowners' bylaws have been affected by this decision. It's a legal question. But in general, I think the reason why we're doing this is because the federal regulation supersedes local law, so we're changing local law to be consistent with that.
Yeah, I know that in a lot of homeowners associations, they can't put like a "for sale" sign on their car. They can't put an advertising sign in their front yard if they're having construction done or kind of renovations. They can have "for sale" signs, it's their house is for sale, but that's limp, that's it.
Yeah. I'm gonna, I'm gonna check on that. I mean, I would have an answer for it, but I wouldn't have had the time to confirm it, so I'm gonna note that. It's not necessarily related to the revisions we're making, but it may be an opportunity for us to advise some homeowners organizations on revising their bylaws.
Yeah, 'cause we have a few here in the township. Thank you.
Thank you.
One other area that I have, that, now that Ms. Trich brought that up, what about deed restrictions? How would those apply if there was a conflict?
I'd have to check on, I'll add that to the list on things to check on for deed restrictions.
I'm not aware of any commercial property having a deed restriction on signs, but it might be something we better look at, just to make sure that we've covered ourselves. Let's move on from residential to the next one, which is signs permitted in business Nobody has any comments?
No.
All right, take a second or so. Go ahead.
The portable sidewalk sign standards, they were, in your opinion, you have that? It's down near the bottom, PS 18? That was fine, the way it was written, correct?
Yeah, so I think what we're noting, I think that what we're noting here is that we've changed those, those, we were able to keep those standards, but reformat them in this table so that what you're seeing there is consistent from a regulatory perspective with what was, with how the ordinance regulated those signs prior to this change. So in an instance, if there was a change, we've noted in the comments what that changes as well. But in this case, we found that we could continue to regulate them in a similar way, but since it's in a table now, it looks a little new.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to our next section, 36-795, signs permitted in industrial districts. All right, hearing.
Quick question.
Oh.
So what do any of the revisions have to do with existing signs that are out there? Is there an integrity automatically, they're enforced with that, and that's a period of time, or is that a program?
They would be an existing non-conforming sign. They're, there's probably a section coming up about non-conforming signs, but they would be allowed to be kept. And then if there were modifications, there would be triggers to bringing them into conformance with, with the new signs, signs regulations. Yeah, so it's coming down, but the existing non-conforming signs section is 36804. It's on page 19. And we only made one small modification to how those are changed. So essentially, the procedures for dealing with non-conforming signs are not recommended to change.
Ms. Trich?
So if I'm reading this correctly, banners, pennants, searchlight balloons, or other gas filled or fan part figures shall be permitted in conjunction with an approved temporary use permit. But then it says it's deleted at the opening of business or for a special event or sale. That's usually why they put those signs up, is what's being deleted, the permit process?
If you could let me know where you're looking.
Page 13, section 36-796. It's the first paragraph, first two lines, actually.
I got you.
Uh huh. So is this saying that you do not have to have a permit to put those banners, pennants, searchlight balloons up? Because I think we used to have to do that.
Yes. So what it's saying is that you are required to get a permit for these with a, as a temporary use permit.
Okay.
But what's deleted is at the opening of a new business or special event or sale. Because if it's a new business, if it's a requirement on new businesses or a requirement of a special event or sale, that is a speaker-based regulation.
Really?
Whereas if we just require this for all signs in conjunction with temporary use permit, it applies to the, you know, entire, tires, all of these districts that are referenced for temporary use permits.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a follow-up question on that then, and maybe I've missed it and, or we haven't come up to it yet. But then if there is a grand opening, is a business permitted an additional sign for a certain period of time? Because this is only with a temporary use permit, but if they want to have a, an additional sign for so many days after the opening of their business, is that permitted elsewhere?
I think that the move would be to make that a temporary event. If there was an event that was a grand opening, that we would regulate that as a, as a temporary use, that the grand opening was a temporary use and that by applying for temporary use permit, you could be permitted that extra signage in conjunction with that permit.
Does that make it more difficult then, if somebody wants to? We have new openings on Main Street, say, does that make it more difficult or onerous for them to have a, an additional sign, because then they would have to file for a temporary use permit?
In that they have to file for, I mean, I, so yeah, if you have to get a new permit, that's an extra step. But on the other hand, we are now required not to give special privileges to someone, to a speaker, you know? And in this case, the speaker is a new business, and we cannot give them extra signs or extra rights beyond what other speakers get. So this change is consistent with a content neutral approach to signing. You know, the alternative would essentially be give, give all uses the right to do temporary signs all the time, which, which is probably contrary to the character and design, you know, wishes of township in regulating signs, the aesthetic value of signs.
All right, I got you. Under, I see where you're going. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other comments, let's move on to the next sections. 36-797, outdoor advertising signs, billboards.
I don't know if this makes a lot of sense. I think it's sort of in line with what Mr. Kuzno said. These regulations are, they seem to me to be incredibly reasonable, but if everything is grandfathered in our problems in this township, it seems to me, unless there's a sign that's going to be tweaked, aren't really addressed by them, I'd say that, especially with regard to the billboards and their location and their, you know, we're still stuck with what we got. So I don't know. Maybe that's a complaint, not a comment.
Hopefully with code enforcement officers and monitoring the repair of these boards and our upkeep, we can, as we've said, bring them into compliance in the future here. But I know we can't just force everybody to remove what's not compliant to the new regulations. Everything's grandfathered, yes. So it's gonna be, I guess, a process of monitoring and reviewing these, make sure they're up kept properly and...
But should they collapse or get destroyed? They have to comply, so yeah.
Yes. So as much it'd be nice to get rid of a few of them, yes. All right, let's go on to, I guess, the next section, electronic message signs, 36-798 on page 15.
So I have a, I don't know if it's a comment or a question, but with the electronic messaging signs, I know they're not supposed to be flashing so much that they're a distraction to drivers. So I remember when we discussed our side ordinance a few years ago, the same issue came up with those balloons, you know, because they can be a distraction and pennants that flutter back and forth. So what's, how... that flutter back and forth, so what's, how are they applied equally, I guess is what I want to say? Is, is it okay for the banners to flutter and the balloons to fly and then have to change the sign, uh, frequency, the lighting on electronic messaging? I understand it, I just wonder where the equality is.
Um, I mean, I see the, the connection to, between the issues. Um, the, you know, the frequency of the changing message is, um, at thirty seconds in the zoning ordinance, which means, um, you know, twice a minute, um, so I often think about that as, you know, if, if it, well, if you're driving by, um, you know, will it change in the time it takes you to drive by? Probably not. Um, if you're sitting at a stoplight, um, it might change once during the cycle, um, which if you're stopped, is probably not, not too, too frequent either. So, um, you know, if you're walking, you might have to watch it change three or four times when you walk by, but, um, it's, it's, you know, it's a reasonable, uh, regulation, and we're not recommending changing it.
Okay, let's move on to the next section, thirty-six, seven, nine, nine, exemptions.
Do you have a question about number two? Sign copy carved into stone, concrete, or other similar material or permanent type construction and made an integral part of the structure or architecture of the building? So there's no size restriction? And does structure mean, how is structure defined in the ordinance? Is it saying structure of the building? Part of the structure of the building or the architecture of the building?
So it wouldn't be like advertising would be like the address or the name of the business or something like that? Is that what you're thinking?
Address signs is addressed in number eight. I was just curious as to the reading of it, is it an integral part of the structure of the building or integral part of the structure? Just wondered if that could be a little confusing or allow something that's not intended by the ordinance, particularly since there's no size restriction? Just wondering about enforcement issues.
Um, I, I understand the question. Um, you know, I think that this is like, you know, if you have a, uh, you know, if you're looking at a historic building and on the side of the building it says the name, maybe it's a named building, and it says, you know, the Whitney or something like that, um, that that's a part of the architectural character of that building, and that this is to permit new buildings that are designed with that type of a traditional feel to have that type of architectural feature without counting it as a sign. Um, and, you know, I think the question of whether, you know, not it was, you know, structural, I think is good. I think, I, I think that this is, you know, it's, it's a building, um, and not so much, you know, I'm trying to picture in my mind if there was, you know, a, uh, an awning, and the awning was to say, um, you know, have a metal base across that said, you know, Wendy's or something like that, if that would, you know, fall under this exemption. And I don't think that that's the intent of the exception, if that's your question. I think, you know, um, I wouldn't imagine this exemption being used in, in that way or applied in that way.
All right, thanks.
Okay, hearing no other comments, let's move on to thirty-six dash eight hundred, prohibited signs.
I think this maybe is more of a logistical question. Is it the, the ordinance enforcer who goes around and gets all those clean pillow top signs that are absolutely everywhere?
If someone complains, yes. So I have a question about number fourteen. What's a commercial people's sign?
I, I think that's like, um, tax season, like someone standing in a Statue of Liberty costume with a sign. Um, I, I can double check it, but I think that it's prohibiting that, that type of activity as a sign.
So I have a question. Um, I've been, a couple places in the township, I see, I've seen these, and I don't know if I can explain it right or not, but it's like a little person, but it's plastic, and it says slow, or it says something else. What, is that addressed anywhere in here?
No, that is, um, a, you know, permitted, uh, crossing feature.
It's on people's property?
Yeah, um, they're, they're, uh, we call them scouts sometimes, uh, in the bike ped safety world, um, but, um, you know, it could be that they are not placed according to, um, the manual uniform traffic control devices, and you could potentially look at it like that. But it's, uh, you know, they're movable, a lot of times used at school crossings, so the idea is you put, put them out during, um, uh, you know, when people go or leave school, and then you take, you take them away.
I've been seeing them in the middle of streets and neighborhoods, so I, yeah, same thing?
They can be placed in the streets, in the center of the street at a crossing.
Not at a crossing, just in somebody's lawn. That's what I...
So it's...
They want people to slow down, driving through the neighborhood, so it's not a crossing.
I, okay, I think it's a little bit of a gray area. If it, if it was a, um, approved, uh, traffic control sign, but placed, you know, elective, you know, as electively on somebody's property, I, if I were regulating it, I would count it as a, as a residential sign. So it would be regulated in the same way that, you know, residential signage is regulated.
All right, uh, any other comments? Not seen any, let's move on to section thirty-six, eight oh one, permits and fees. Doesn't look like we have any major changes here. All right, let's move on to eight oh two, computation of surface of signs, surface area. I like the schematic showing how they're measured, I think that's going to be quite helpful, especially for a lot of these irregular shaped signs.
Right. And this is just the sign itself, it's not the supports or anything, right?
Correct, so I think, believe the supports are covered under separate sections. No comments? One that everybody would like to see, the removal, section eight oh three.
Where's my list?
Quite a few would like to be removed, I think.
Most of these look like, um, just wordsmithing.
Yeah, doesn't look like there's much change, just clarifications.
Perhaps this is somewhere else, and I missed it. Is, under this section are campaign signs and election signs included? Just because sometimes they stay up forever and ever, and it becomes something, once the election's over, is something different.
Yeah, those are regulated anyway. Um, you can put them out thirty days before the election, but they have to be down twenty-four hours after the vote.
Right, so who enforces that, because they learn?
The people that put the signs up are supposed to take them down, but they don't, and, and the, uh, uh, road commission, if they combine, if they're in the right way, they can take them down or throw them away.
Or they cut right over them.
Cut right over them, yeah. But yeah, um, people are supposed to be responsible for their own, but the township can remove them too.
Okay, um, hearing no comments, we'll go to section eight oh four, non-conforming signs. Doesn't look like we have any real changes there. And then section eight oh five, the responsibility for the signs.
Does this mean that if somebody has a window sign rubbed onto their window, it has to be by someone licensed in the state of Michigan? Number two, signs shall be constructed and erected only by individuals or companies licensed in the state of Michigan for such purpose?
Yeah, it seems a place...
Is it individuals or companies licensed? Is this correct? Individuals or companies licensed?
Or companies.
Okay, that, that is a good question.
Is that necessary?
Um, well, there's, there's no change in, you know, that we've made in this, this is the existing regulation. Uh, I, this is something that I can note and, and look at, um, what, what the effect of it would be if we were, were to delete it, if there's another requirement in the zoning code that would generally cover licensure for this type of thing.
Yeah, I was gonna say, in the internet age, somebody may buy one online and have it shipped in, which would mean that they're not from the state of Michigan, possibly.
Don't we have a section where the, uh, just building permit required for signs? If it's one required building permit, so maybe that might qualify, but if it's not required building permit for a signature sign, or whatever else, certainly would be licensed.
Or a farm scan.
Yeah, it just, it says it, it applies to all signs. That was why it was, that is raising the question. Just seems a little onerous.
Could you add words? That says signs employer building permit shall be...
I think that that's a pretty good suggestion to address this concern, so I'm gonna note that suggestion, but also, um, just take a look at the effect of that. Um, I think that one of the things that was deleted here was accept those signs permitted in section seven, error, three, six, seven, nine, oh, net nine, one, nine, two, you know, um, but because we can't, you know, again, give special privileges to certain signs, um, it may have, uh, expanded the impact of this, um, this regulation, so I think it's a good catch, um, also a good suggestion, and we'll take another look at it.
Okay.
The next one, the next one says all sign required permit shall be...
All right, the last one that we have on here is eight oh six, registry, and I see the only change really is sign user. So, hearing no comments, appears we've gone through the entire presentation, and you will be reviewing what we've talked about and then updating and presenting us with a new revised set of these?
Yes, yes, I think it was a good conversation tonight, I'm glad we made it through all of it, um, so we made some serious progress. I think we can issue, issue revisions and, uh, continue the discussion at a future planning commission meeting.
Ms. Chirk.
I just have a question about the, um, non-combustible materials for the signs, so what are there, is there like a certain grade of wood that would be less combustible?
There, so there is a definition, this is kind of going back to the, um, conversation we had last month, um, there is a definition in here that we didn't discuss of what non-combustible meant, and I think it's got, you know, anything that will burn at...
Yeah, I saw that.
You saw that?
Yeah.
I don't remember exactly the degrees, but...
It was hot.
The, the question would be, you know, is, if that's sufficient to permit, um, you know, kind of a higher quality non-combustible wood, um, then we could leave some regulations about non-combustibility because we've defined it as such, so that is the, the research question. Uh, and I think, you know, these, um, regulations are based on models, so, um, I think that's something we can check.
Okay.
Um, and I did actually discuss that a little bit with, with Patrick. Um, we had, we didn't come up with a way of, of changing it, but, um, you know, we understand, understand the issue, understand we want some flexibility in design materials, understand that we also want high-quality design materials, so, um, we'll come back with, with a recommendation in that regard.
Thank you.
Just one quick last question, and again, just really briefly, um, I think we all know where we want this to go and how we want it to positively impact our community, and I think also all of us is really concerned about overregulation and sort of onerous processes, and also cost. Um, so I think it's obviously really important that, you know, we be in line with these changes, um, and that we, in our offices, make sure that this is a, a flowing seamless process, but in, in your opinion, I mean, again, just quickly, in other communities like ours, which are sort of quasi-rurals, is this in line with what you see in communities where this is really high functioning and they're happy with the way it's working? Or is this like, oh my God, so much regulation, and we really don't want to kill creativity, but we don't want clean pillow top mattresses advertised everywhere?
Um, yeah, I, I think that these are, you know, reasonable, uh, regulations. I, um, general, general, I support the idea of regulating, um, for size and, and design, um, and, uh, you know, by, by district. So I think that, um, you know, this is an opportunity for us to look very practically at what the effects... effects of the regulations are and make sure that they are aligned with, with the vision. I think that in, in, in that respect, I think we've done a good job at, at looking at this. You know, I, you know, there are always broader policy questions which are, do we want bigger signs, do we want smaller signs, and, you know, I think that we, we haven't made any bold steps to, to change that, but I think that, you know, sign, sign pollution is a real thing and in a community like this, you know, we don't, we don't want a lot of sign, sign pollution. That, that would be a threat to the, to the character of the township, so in that respect, I think we were able to keep these regulations consistent with what was in the past.
Okay, thank you very much. That was our unfinished business, now new business, does anybody have any new business? None? Ask for approval of the August sixteenth minutes from our regular meeting.
So I'll make a motion to approve the Northville Township Planning Commission minutes of the regular meeting, August sixteenth, two thousand seventeen.
Go to a final call to the public in three minutes. Please state your name and address if presented.
We need to vote on it, we need to vote on the minutes?
Oh, we do. Sorry.
All of you.
All those in favor of approval?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes.
Passes. All right, call the public. Seem to have no call of the, final call of the public, any comments from the commissioners? Ms. Trigg?
I just wanted to let the planning commission know that we have most recently, and at the last board meeting had two speakers come before the board, asking us to consider advocating for medical marijuana facilities in Northville Township, and the office has been getting calls as well from people that are interested in doing that, so I imagine that this is going to come up at some point and we're gonna have to either decide whether to opt in or opt out and if, depending on how that goes, then the planning commission would be involved in anything that might come before us, so, just so you're aware.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Hearing none, announcements is our next regular meeting will be September twentieth, and at that, I will ask for adjournment. All opposed?
All in favor.
Yeah, well, I think we're all in favor of it, so. Legally all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? None, passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.